Welcome, everybody, to the Lee School Committee meeting. It's Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, 5 o'clock. We are in the Lee Middle and High School Library, and we are continuing to be in a virtual meeting room for Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law General Law Chapter 30A Section 20. This meeting will take place in a hybrid fashion, both virtually via Zoom or in person for those committee members and attendees choosing to access in either manner. I call this meeting to order pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 20. I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. Next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance with Parker Stanton and.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, guys. All right. The mission statement of Lee Public Schools is to ensure students have the opportunities to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, can you do a local course, please? Mr. Robin?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Langloch?
Here.
Ms. Larmen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Okay. Next up is approval of the February 11th, 2025, Lee School Committee meeting.
I make a motion to approve the February 11th, 2025, Lee School Committee meeting.
Outstanding.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll for us, please? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langloch?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have public input with Nicole.
Individuals are invited to address the committee regarding items on this evening's agenda at this time. Per policy, speakers are limited to three minutes each. Issues raised will normally be referred to the administration or a subcommittee of the school committee. Start in person or move over virtual?
Sure.
Good evening, Lee School Committee. As you know, my name is Kelly Coperek, and I'm a mother of Michael Coperek, who has Down Syndrome and significant intellectual learning disability. Michael is also a past graduate of Lee Public Schools, class of 2020. On February 11th, 2025, the Lee School Committee voted unanimously by all seven members of the board to have the graduation requirement policy, IKF, referred to the school committee's policy subcommittee for review. By all seven members voting unanimously, it appears that the board truly cares about the past graduates with significant intellectual learning disabilities who were unable to receive their diplomas simply due to the NCAS requirement law when it was still in effect. Thank you to the Lee School Committee for showing your support by referring to the policy subcommittee, the graduation requirement policy, IKF. On March 5th, 2025, the policy subcommittee, Principal Brigenti and Superintendent Richard, met to review the graduation requirement policy, IKF. Our family also attended the meeting as observers. While the policy subcommittee and the school administration were seated at the table to discuss the graduation requirement policy, IKF, not only did they express much thought about this policy, but they also expressed compassion and empathy because they knew that human beings would be being affected by this policy. The policy subcommittee had questions for Principal Brigenti and Superintendent Richard, and therefore, there will be a follow-up policy subcommittee meeting on April 16th, 2025. Thank you to the policy subcommittee for taking the time to discuss the graduation requirement policy, IKF. A very thank, a very special thank you to Principal Brigenti and Superintendent Richard for providing guidance to the policy subcommittee on this important matter. It means a great deal to my family that discussions regarding graduation requirement policy, IKF, will continue. My family is looking forward to being observers again at the April 16th Policy Subcommittee. In closing, my son, Michael, and other past Lee Public Schools high school graduates with significant intellectual learning disabilities in graduating classes 2003 through 2024, we're all counting on the Lee School Committee to be their voices in making a much-needed change. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have reports. Our first report is from the LES Drama. Ruth? Come on up. Welcome, welcome.
The press field is here.
Wherever you need the room.
Hi. So, my name is Sarah Nichols. I'm one of the co-directors of our drama program. I'm really excited to be here tonight. I'm here with the school members, and these are five of 71 students that have joined our drama club this year, and they are super excited. They, we meet every Tuesday. We have first through sixth grade. The things that we work on are public speaking, confidence building, being in a room and supporting other people. So this year, we're going to be doing The Wizard of Oz. We invite all of you to join us. It's a very updated, very kid-friendly version of it. Our play is May 3rd. And so, one of, some of the things that we would like to say to all of you is thank you for your support. Principal slash Superintendent Richard, thank you for your support. Our staff, Jesser Hall, the PTO, because of donations and time, people have given us were a completely self-funded group. So, we had an amazing fundraiser last year. I think we raised $5,600 toward the drama club, and so it bought us props from Shakespeare and Company that printed and costumes, and we hope that this is going to be many, many years of this. So, we thought, because you guys don't talk nearly enough, that we would do some tongue twisters with you guys to get you warmed up, right? So they're going to kind of come around, and if you guys could each pick a kid, I'm going to give Mr. Richard this one. Go around and pick a member and all stand up and do some tongue twisters with each other. Go ahead, Haley. You can go around. And Lily, do you want to go right here?
Yeah.
Oh, we can go over there, and we can split.
So, we do it back and forth. So if you don't have a kid, you have to partner up with the person next to you. It's team building, guys. Let's do it. All right.
Guess what, Sophia?
And I struggle with tongue twisters, so bear with me. Unique New York. You can't do it. Come on, to each other. Unique New York. All right, this one's a little bit of a speed challenge. How much wood could a woodchuck chuck if a woodchuck could chuck wood? We're ready for the next one. Peter Piper picked a pack of pickled peppers. She sells bee shells by the sea. All right, can we thank the committee for having us? Thank you, guys, for helping us to be better sleepers.
All right. Next up, we have, because I just tortured her. I haven't tortured Sophia enough. I'm going to torture her again during our student representative report.
The peer group visited the middle schoolers at St. Mary's yesterday, and they did some sign experiments. And they are currently planning on hosting a second annual pet show in March, where students and staff can submit their pictures of their pets, and they can enter them in different categories to win a prize. Robotic season is on you now, but they have been able to begin coding their robot. They have a contact at General Dynamics who secured them funding and was also able to order more parts along with a laptop for them. But unfortunately, the day after the funding was approved, the freeze was put in place. So they're going to hope that they can get the materials this year, but it might have to wait. And they also have a plan to collaborate with the three other Berkshire County teams next year, so that they can all have their own little building coding and competing days where they can work together. The GSA is continuing to research historic career events as they begin constructing their diagrams to represent these events. Last time I was here, I'd mentioned that Social Justice was doing a Jeopardy event for Black History Month in February, and I'm happy to say that I think it went very well from my perspective. It looked like students were very happy to participate, although the donuts might have been a little bit of motivation. Whiz Team won their match at the most recent competition last week, and if I'm remembering right, that is now three weeks in a row that all of our teams won their matches. The school's musical Hades Town was just performed this past Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and I might be a little biased because I did go all three days, but from what I heard from others, everyone enjoyed it, and it was an amazing show. And that's it for me.
Can I ask anybody any questions for Sophia? All right. Next up, we have our superintendent's update.
Thank you very much, Ms. Larmen. We are trying to present here slightly. Enrollment update, 632 students as of March 1st. So we are again holding steady right around that number. You'll notice six outplayed, six outplayed students, 53 students tuitioning in, and we still have 166 choice in students. So we continue to remain a healthy net positive in terms of the number of students coming in to Lee versus those who are choicing to surrounding districts. We are working with the Food Bank of Western Mass through the Wellness Committee. This is a program that is fully funded through SNAP Ed, and it is designed to encourage students to learn healthy eating practices within a budget so that that can be applied to families who may have, who may be food insecure, but they, they're going to be coming in on 21st and 22nd. They've got a plan to do some breakfast-type smoothies with the kids. Don't be scared off. It will include spinach. But I've been assured that it actually tastes really good. So we'll see what happens, but pretty excited about that partnership. I was really impressed the lengths that Food Bank of Western Mass was willing to come to, to service us here, here in Lee. We're exploring the partnership with LYA. They've got a, there's an upcoming special town meeting that I don't want to get too far in front of, but that may determine whether this partnership is realized or not, but they're wondering whether they could potentially lease some space at the elementary school for their preschool programs. They have been put on notice that we are possibly rolling out preschool at some point. So they're aware of that and the competition that that would create, but like so many other things that we do, I try, trying my best to be a good community partner for LYA. They service so many of our students in after-school programming and during the summer that I want to make sure that we, we try to respect their wishes if possible. So it's still early, but again, there is an opportunity perhaps for some, some revenue to come back towards the schools and also to serve as a direct pipeline. So some of these students who might otherwise choose to go to another school once they're at LES for a year of preschool, that, that will become familiar to them, and hopefully they will stay with us. I'll keep everyone updated on that as appropriate. Student Opportunity Act, last year at this meeting, you all voted to accept the SOA Plan. That's, that's a three-year plan. It requires an annual update, so I'm in the process of finalizing that update. It does not require school committee approval, but simply notes whatever progress we have made. I was very tempted. I was at a meeting about a month ago, and a colleague said that she was ending each section with the amount of information in this section is commensurate with the amount of money that we have received. I wasn't willing to do that. I don't need to make any enemies of the state, but the reality is, we don't get very much Student Opportunity Act monies compared to some neighbors in other communities that are getting millions of dollars. We're getting a lot, a lot less than that. NCAS testing is beginning next week, right? It's next week or two weeks? I apologize. Two weeks at LMHS. Test dates are set. The windows are set at LES. They'll begin on April 7th. We have a professional development day on Friday, so no student, no school for students, but all staff will be reporting. We've got a lot of building-based PD. Jennifer has put together some PD for her Special Education Department, and then a team from the Day of AI will be coming to talk about artificial intelligence in schools. So that's an organization that's run by former Commissioner Jeff Riley. So that will have two hours of PD from his team. Jeff is unable to join us on the 14th. However, he has committed to being a keynote speaker at commencement in August. So to talk about AI, it wasn't too many years ago, I think it was back in 2019, that Jeff opened up convocation ceremonies here that year. MSBA Statement of Interest. So we've been talking about this for some time. This is relative to the roofs. This is part of the accelerated repair program through MSBA. I've shared this information with you before. The town has taken the steps that they need to vote to support the funding for schematic design. The next step is for this committee later in the agenda to take a vote, hopefully to support schematic design. The town has put a placeholder for $233,000 in their warrant for town meeting in May to support the costs associated with that, plus an additional $100,000 in capital for the schools for other projects that we need to take care of. So a big thank you to the town for their, for their part in making that happen. FY26 budget update, as we shared in the Finance Subcommittee. There's been some adjustment to that 5.81, or what was previously 5.81. I emailed the committee yesterday to inform you that we've got an additional vocational education student that we are made aware of. So I plugged that $20,000 tuition into the vote ed line. What that did is move our budget from 5.81 to 5.99% again. As I said to the Subcommittee, I still feel that that is a reasonable, respectful, and responsible budget number. And as of today, we still stay on May, June 16th, Monday, June 16th. That's the last day of school. That's what I have for you from that chair.
Any questions for Mike? All right. Rolling into your next.
From the other chair. This is quick, but Read Across America took place last week. We, we changed things up. We didn't invite community readers, although we did have some slight participation in that department, but we did a masked reader series and a number of volunteers, some suckers, put on costumes and dressed up and did the reading. I was happy to be one of those, and it was a lot of fun. The kids got really into it, trying to guess who is in, in their costumes and doing the reading. It was just a nice variation, so we weren't doing the same thing every year. We've got a walk-to-school event on Thursday morning. You are all invited to participate if you're available. We gather down at the town green around 7:40 in the morning and make our way up here. We're going to be joined on Thursday morning by Boomer. Boomer is the mascot of the Springfield Thunderbirds. He's going to, he hit, I don't know, Boomer is going to join us on the walk to try to drum up some additional support for the LES PTO as a Springfield Thunderbirds dedicated night on the 21st, so Friday, the 21st. Spring, the portion of, of ticket sales will go back to the PTO, and there will be some specials, raffles, and things that where, again, we'll earn a portion of proceeds from that. So if you're looking for something to do on, on Friday night, March 21, please be encouraged to buy some tickets and join us. And then, I hope this works. The sixth grade team has created a new lost and found. For those of you who come into the main entrance at LES, you see that there are lots and lots of belongings that, that get left across the school. And, and look at, something's already gone. So we've got this little site where it makes it a little easier for families to take a look and see what, what items are available and that need to be picked up. So thanks to the sixth grade team for being responsible behind getting, getting that updated, because I think it's kind of a cool, kind of a cool idea for us. And with that, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Sure. Questions for Principal Mike? All right. Next up, we've been on high school with Greg Brigenti.
Thank you. On the Friday after February break, we had our first-ever first semester honors breakfast. Their cafeteria crew here put together a great breakfast menu for those students who made honors or high honors for first semester, which was 124 students. Everyone seemed to have a great time, and it's something we definitely are looking to do again. So that was great. Last week, we had a guest speaker, Katie Wood. She talked to the school about the concept of daily gratitude and finding what you need to keep moving forward. Her message, I thought, was, was spot on. It was a great message. I've received many positive reviews, both from students and staff about her presentation. So I wanted to thank the District Wellness Committee for putting together and making that possible for our school community. Last weekend, the drama program put on, as was said earlier, three truly exceptional performances at Hades Town. The entire cast and crew, led by Advisors Gary Cannon and Aaron White, did a fantastic job, as always. The spring semester usually sees a bunch of field trips. So far, the peer class visited a local nursing home last week, spending some time chatting and playing games with the residents. If you saw any of the pictures on our Instagram, it was really heartwarming, and I think both the seniors and the peer students got a lot out of that visit. Today, we had a group of juniors and seniors go to the BCC Career Fair, and then next Tuesday, we have a group of juniors attending the Big E College Fair. And then on March 27th, most of the senior class, we travel into New York City to attend a performance of The Great Gatsby, which is a novel that they read in English 12. Winter sports are drawing to a close, with the girls' basketball team traveling to play Renaissance in the final four tomorrow evening. If anybody can't attend, doesn't, can't make the drive out to Palmer, the game will be livestreamed on the NFHS Network. We do have to buy a subscription, but if you remember to cancel it after the game, you have to pay for one month. The boys' basketball team were named the league champions and also made it to the early rounds of the state tournament this year. And in bowling, Devon Filio was our state individuals champion with Matty Kotek coming in third, and the team as a whole won the Berkshire County championship. A great winter season. Junior college planning night is this Thursday at 6:00 PM here in the library, and the family information night for next year's seventh graders, which is the class of 2031, will also be Thursday at 6:30 in the cafeteria. Among other things, they'll receive their course selection sheets for the 25, 26 school year, and current LMHS students will begin their course selection process on April 1st. NCAS testing for us begins on the 25th and 26th of the month with grade 10 ELA, and then middle school ELA and math happen in April, and then grade 10 math happens a little later in May. Lastly, I'd like to recognize freshman Leland Davis, who on his own entered the USS Massachusetts Historic Essay Contest and was selected as one of the winners. Pretty cool for him. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Greg? All great things. All right, next up, we have Special Education with Jen.
Hi, I'm sorry, the sun is coming right in my window. I apologize I couldn't be there tonight. I had an appointment earlier today, so thank you for indulging me to be here virtually. We have some good news today. Actually, Mr. Richard and myself both got notice from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that we participate in the tiered focus monitoring system, which looks at indicators for special education, English language learners, and civil rights. And we were able to close that process out this year. The next time that we will engage in something with them for this process will be not next school year, but the one after, and they'll probably do a site visit at that time. It'll be a little less in-depth than the one that we just completed after the last year and a half, but it was overall a good, a good process, and we were able to, as we're going through the new IEP process, especially because there's so many changes. I think it was a good way of us looking at all of our student files and making sure they were up to date, and that we were following the new processes and guidelines that are being put out regarding special education in Massachusetts. So that's, that's exciting for us, because that's been kind of a little bit time-consuming over the past year or so. The other piece is, we are currently looking at summer programming. Students that require any special education programming over the summer, we will be notifying those families by April 18th if services are being recommended for their children. Our summer program is going to be running between June 30th and July 31st. That is for both a four-week and a five-week program, depending on what program students are invited to, and we're going to be posting for positions for the summer program here shortly in the next week or so, just so we can make sure we have everything up and running and transportation all set for summer. We try to get that completed by May 1st. We are also working on a survey that will be sent out to families and possibly to staff, too. I think it might be good to get feedback from both about the new IEP process. It's been a lot of work, I think, for the special education liaisons this year. They're basically writing every IEP in the district as a brand-new IEP this year because of the new system that we are now in. So it's been a lot of time and dedication that they have all spent, and a lot of what we're doing on our PD day on Friday is about that and going through the new IEP and looking at it kind of page by page to go over questions that families have brought up, that liaisons or service providers may have. And so we will definitely do a separate survey for the staff, just to kind of get feedback. It was a lot even for staff, too. There was a lot of, a lot of meetings where we had to reconvene and then write a new IEP where we may not have had to in the past, but because of the new process. So it's been definitely an extensive year. I do see that over next year and the year after, the process will begin to flow and, and I think not be as time-consuming, but I, I can't speak enough to the dedication of the professionals that have participated in that process, because it's definitely not an easy one, and we're talking about the education of students that have special needs. So I think it's been a great collaboration with families and faculty and all of the service providers that, you know, make education possible for, for students that need to be educated in a special way. This is just a reminder that we have both preschool screenings for three- and four-year-olds and kindergarten screenings for five-year-olds. If your student is going to be, if your child's going to be three, four, or five by October 1st of this year, they can reach out for preschool screenings to my office, the Special Education Office at Lee Elementary School. And for kindergarten screenings, if your child's going to be five by October 1st, you can reach out to Jessica Trombley in the main office of Lee Elementary School, and you can set appointments for those screenings. They're coming. Preschool screenings are April 29th and May 1st. Kindergarten screenings are, I believe, April 6th, I'm sorry, May 6th and May 8th. Kindergarten screenings are, I believe, April sixth, I'm sorry, May sixth and May eighth. Um so please reach out if you have any questions about how either of those programmings work, how screenings work. Um we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Um the Special Education Parent Advisory Council um is, I think, doing wonderful. We have anywhere from eight, you know, s- uh six to twelve members that are kind of in and out and working um as a group together. They have a uh we're planning a um emergency responders meet and greet, which is tentatively set for May first at Lee Middle and High School. I have to confirm the date um with Mr. Brigenti. And um and we will send out a notice to um everyone in in the district that may have students that want to visit. Um it's designed so that students with special needs, if emergency responders have to be called to a home in an in an emergency situation, it's a way of identifying if there's a a child or an adult in that home that may have special needs or may need emergency responders to arrive quietly. Um or if they not to have um flashing lights. So it's just a way for us to do that. Um the school, um the CPAC has some representatives that would like to come to the next school committee meeting. Um so I will reach out to um the chair and see if we can give them a few minutes of their time at the April school committee meeting. They'd like to just share um what their purpose is, what they're planning, and hopefully get some more parents to be involved um with the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Um and that's all I have.
Does anybody have any questions for Jen? All right. Last but not least, facilities with Jen.
Um the new tables are new to both cafeterias. The middle and high schools accepted into the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center building electrification and transformation accelerator project. This will give us a ton of data on the school, you know, plan for future electrification. Um and working with World Energy Endeavor Source to per firm to perform energy efficiency upgrades, both schools. And with the ice and smell snow gone, facilities and drones have started working on the spring cleanup and doing filter things.
That is very optimistic. So I think last second, we have a snow day in April.
April.
Yeah. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Jen? All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have committee reports. First up, Stevens Committee.
Yep. So we met earlier uh fourth period this evening and had a little discussion, but we talked about uh the warrants. So Mr. Jesner, please.
So we've had two accounts payable warrants since our last meeting. The first one was for two hundred ninety seven thousand six hundred thirty four dollars and thirteen cents. And the top vendors for that warrant were C T C, Du four and Pittsfield Public Schools. And the second warrant was for one hundred forty five thousand six hundred ninety three dollars and seventy three cents. The top vendors for that warrant are Energy, Soliant, Sprayed. The total of the two warrants is four hundred forty three thousand three hundred twenty seven dollars and eighty six cents.
Thank you. And the fine that some committee did vote to approve this.
Thank you. All right. I will entertain a motion for council table.
I'll move to accept the warrant for four hundred forty three thousand three hundred twenty seven dollars and eighty six.
Great. Uh any discussion? Uh Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper, let's say. Ms. Keshar, yes. Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Since our last meeting totaled six hundred twenty two thousand one hundred twenty eight dollars and seventy one cents. And uh some committee did vote to approve this warrant.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll warrant in the total of six hundred and twenty two thousand one hundred twenty eight dollars and seventy one cents.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All right. Brenda, you get a minute.
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Phil Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
I'm staying.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
That's it.
That's it. All right. Next up, we have the policy subcommittee.
Um as we heard during public comment, uh there's a meeting of the policy subcommittee discuss uh I K F graduation requirements. Um that work will be ongoing at our next upcoming meeting as we search for more um information and guidance. Bring any of our findings back to the full committee.
Thank you. All right. No old business, so on to new business. First up, we have the donation, I believe.
Uh we are in uh receipt of a donation that I would like to ask the school committee to accept. It's five thousand dollars from the Smile Like Jack Foundation. Uh the purpose for the donation is to support the entrepreneur fair at LES. Um great organization. We've we've worked with them uh for at least the last year uh and and the kids get really, really excited about the work that they did. They're very well attended, well supported, and I would um again, ask the committee to um accept the donation, please.
And I will note that it was accepted through the finance committee as well. So would anybody like to make a motion to accept the donation?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation, five thousand dollars, support the entrepreneur fair.
Second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have the LMHS Program of Studies.
Um you should have in front of the town, you should have in front of you, we um recommended uh proposed changes in the program of studies for the new school year that were presented to the curriculum subcommittee meeting uh committee last week or the week before.
Yeah.
They're actually, they were actually, that would be
Be approved it.
Right. Okay. That's that's what we need to
Yes, we approved it. All three of us.
Anybody like to make a motion to approve the LMHS Program of Studies?
I made a motion to approve the L M H Program of Studies.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have the Mass Building Authority, M S B A Statement of Interest, S O I for school roofs.
So uh again, we've been talking about this. Uh the the M S B A uh is uh a truly a stickler for um motions, language, monies, et cetera. If if we get welcomed into this process, it is quite the experience working with M S B A. But again, in order for us to get our application in by March twenty first, uh the school committee needs to uh vote to move forward and to be uh responsible for uh the costs associated with um schematic design uh for uh for the roofs. There are two motions uh available for you to make, one for each school, because we need to um anticipate that one or or neither will be uh accepted. So we do the motions separately so that we can submit uh our statement of interest to M S B A in a uh apprehensive manner. So the language is on the screen. Uh it was shared with you. Uh Brenda's aware that if this, if these do, whether they pass or they don't, uh she's got the language. They need to appear in the minutes exactly as written.
I got you, Mike. Don't worry. Okay. I number one resolved, having convened an open meeting on Tuesday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty five. Prior to the S O I submission closing date, the Lee School Committee of Lee, Massachusetts, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March thirteenth, two thousand twenty five for the Lee Middle and High School located at three hundred Graylock Street, Lee, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category or categories for which an application may be submitted to Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The district is applying for priority number five as the roof is thirty two years old and is subject to leaking and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the award of a grant or any other funding commitment on the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the city slash town slash regional school district to filing an application for funding within the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Good. Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
What is priority number five?
It's uh it's uh the age uh age of the age of the roof.
Yeah. Is that like highest priority?
No, no, there's no
That's a list of priorities that you can choose that you are applying under.
Yeah. So we've we're
Any other discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please?
Ms. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right. No. No, go.
No, she got skipped.
No, I got skipped. Yes.
Oh.
Nicole, yes. No worries.
I thought she was gonna do the motion for us.
I thought you were gonna go for it. It's yours if you want to do it.
I was waiting for
I think that comes with the territory. Yeah, no, listen. I was interrupting. I don't think doing any more.
My eyes can't even see that.
I know.
All right. Number two resolved. Having convened an open meeting on Tuesday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty five, prior to the S O I submission closing date, the Lee School Committee of Lee, Massachusetts, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March thirteenth, two thousand twenty five for the Lee Elementary School located at three ten Graylock Street, Lee, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category of categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The district is applying for priority number five as the roof is twenty four years old and is subject to leaking and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of any grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the town slash so city slash town slash regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Nice job.
Did it.
Second. I'll second. Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have the Student Opportunity Act.
Um there's actually no um there is no action required. I had that placeholder uh based on the experience last year of the committee needing to vote. But when I made it through the entire uh
form?
Apple form, it doesn't require school committee approval, so there is no action.
Moving on. Contracts for Lee School Committee approval.
Where do you want to take this or do you want me to? What happens for many members? Um I'm just kidding. So uh thank you to uh the negotiations subcommittee, uh to Mr. Jesner, to the Proger, Mr. Brigenti, to Mrs. Narden, and uh to all the staff uh for working uh hard over the last year um to get contracts uh resolved and 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 ready for your hopeful approval uh this evening. Um if you'll indulge me, I guess I'll go contract by contract, give you a summary uh which was shared with you, but I'll for open meeting purposes, I'll share what there is and and order doesn't indicate any importance or priority relative to the contracts. But in U N A, uh the highlights, we were able to wrap up uh the conversion of uh floating P D uh days to regular P D days. We did that in the last contract, but now it's fully part of what we do. Updated bereavement language uh so as to not require those dates to be taken consecutively uh to allow some flexibility for staff. Updated start of school year language, updated the salary schedule, which I will tell you, I appreciate the work again, that um Alex LaMazia did with U N A as well as the the CAT team, as well as Mr. uh Jesner and the negotiations team to find a salary schedule that doesn't overburden uh the town. Uh but I think makes a a good effort to recognize the work uh that our teachers are doing. Um the stipend schedule was also updated and some uh adjustments were made to uh longevity uh to bring us up to speed a little bit with uh rising costs. Thank you. Want to use one of the time chair, Larmen?
Yeah.
Um so let's make, does anybody want to make a motion for U N A?
I actually uh motion to table all of our contracts until our regularly scheduled meeting next month. Um we have not, we got these documents today at twelve thirty emailed to us. Um and that has not provided uh members with enough time to review the documents, the changes, and to form a full and comprehensive opinion on the contracts.
Anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second a motion to keep the conversation going.
Mike, Mike, listen, I and I I again, I I echo, you know.
Any discussion?
I have discussion. No, I I listen, I I appreciate. I'm sure these contracts are great and fine. Um just, we got these emailed to us, say, at twelve thirty. Um and then the breakdown sheet of, you know, what the changes were, got emailed to us at four fifteen. Um and that's not enough time uh to review the contracts, the changes in the form of the opinion. I'm like I said, I'm sure that they're great. I'm sure there's no issues here. I've negotiated many contracts, union contracts. I know the hard work that goes into it, so I appreciate the the negotiations subcommittee, and I appreciate all the time from the unit reps that, you know, that put their time in the administrators. I know how hard it is. Um but just haven't had enough time to form an opinion about what's been presented to us for a vote.
Mike, what does that do for timing? Does that alter it at all in any way?
Nope. Oh, it does, as I
That the subcommittee did like approve the public contract.
Oh, I have no doubt. Yeah, I I
It doesn't change much. Uh Alex uh was asking, did ask uh through legal counsel what what the expected uh ratification timelines were. Uh I had replied uh earlier that the expectation was it was going to be tonight. Um but uh those things uh things happen. And so if 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 the committee chooses to delay this until April one, I'll just let uh Attorney Dupre and Alex know uh that it's been pushed off. Uh the, all of these contracts were um sort of ratified at the other end. I think that you're you're aware of that. So the other groups, the the receiving groups uh have accepted these contracts as presented, but uh I can respect and understand uh Mr. Nichols uh hesitant.
Any other discussion? Brenda, can you roll call?
Mr. Robin?
Wait, hold on. Can we be clear about what we're roll calling right now? We're voting on whether or not we want to wait until next time. Correct. Okay. I just want to make sure I knew what I was saying.
That's okay. Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
No.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
No.
It's for yeses and free noes.
Okay. So she tables. Yep. Motion passes will be tabled to next month. Um all right. Future business. Our next school committee meeting is April first at five o'clock, which will also include our budget uh hearing, meeting, whatever you want to call it. Um so please be present.
And and Adrian, that will be at five o'clock. So the public budget hearing will be at five o'clock.
Public budget hearing will be at five o'clock, which is when we will be passing our budget for the school year.
The rest of the meeting will start probably about five.
Yeah.
After that, we have adjournment. Does anybody want to make a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Brenda, can you roll?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
We are adjourned at five fifty. Thanks, everybody.